The School Board of the City of Virginia Beach is now in session. This is our formal meeting format. At this time, I ask that my colleagues and everyone in attendance please silence their electronic devices and phones. I ask my colleagues to acknowledge their presence on the voting board. Mr. McDonald is not with us this evening. I ask that everyone join me in a moment of silence. Please rise as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We will now proceed with our awards and presentations. Mrs. Holtz.
And we have these, we have the state basketball champions. The girls first. Tonight's recognition, tonight's recognition begin with not just one, but two basketball state championship teams. First, the Virginia High School League Class Five Girls Champions, Princess Anne High School. Ashlyn Campania, Jasha Clinton, McKenna Harris, Brianna Jackson, Isaiah Jack James, Tiana James, Kendra Johnson, Shereia Lynn, Mahogany Lester, Alexia Lindsay, Cameron McKinney, Natasia Morris, Charlene Watanen, and we have assistant coaches Mark Velbus and William Austin. And also, we have Coach Darnell Dosier. This win marks the sixth consecutive title for the Lady Cavaliers and 10th overall since 2002, both setting VHSL records. No other team in VHL sports history, boys or girls, has won more than five state championships in a row. Congratulations on another spectacular season. And next are the VHSL Class Six Boys State Champions from Lansdowne High School. Michael Christmas, Donald Hand, Christian Jones, Andre Lewis, Corey Martin, Deonte Mobley, Tazir Parkinson, Joshua Petima, Jalen Reynolds, Yosefa Tenaway, Lamont Thornton Olatant, Samuel Turner, Jefferson Youngblood. Managers, Michael Champion and Ariana Ward. We also have assistant coaches Jay Clark, Leon Kelly, Andre Stanley, and Rejay Williams, and Coach Dwight Robinson. This particular boys team finished the season with a remarkable 25 wins and only three losses. In addition to earning the first ever basketball championship for the school, this also marks the first beach district team that the boys title in, that the boys title in that sport in nearly 20 years. Congratulations to the state champions.
who was named the Virginia World Languages Teacher of the Year. This recognition is presented by the Foreign Language Association of Virginia for demonstrating excellence in foreign language instruction and exemplary practice and as an innovative practitioner whose work inspires students and communities. After winning the state honor, Jaworski then went on to be named the Teacher of the Year finalist at the 2019 Northeast Conference on the Teaching of Foreign Languages. Congratulations. Madam Chair, this concludes our recognitions for this evening. We look forward to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, and good evening, Madam Chairwoman and members of the board. Tonight, I am excited to again have the opportunity to share my superintendent's report with you and members of our community. As you know, as part of our goal for in our strategic framework, a culture of growth and excellence, we outline the importance of improving working conditions and fostering a culture of respect for all staff. Well, for the past 20 years, the transportation staff at the Glenwood Garage have seen firsthand how the smallest gestures and acts of kindness can have a transformative power in a workplace. And that's because of Shawn Olson, a transportation serviceman's helper. Beginning his time at the garage through a partnership with CSEP, he has now accrued two decades of service there, helping to ensure our buses are prepped and ready for their routes and on the road. While doing his work, it is the personal touch that he brings to his work that truly sets him apart. Let's learn a little bit more about Shawn now.
As we tell the bus drivers, you're the first person that represents the school system. That child sees in the morning, and normally the last one in the afternoon. And a smile is free, but pays great dividends. Shawn adopted that philosophy, and he greets the drivers. And they come here, and there's a little ray of sunshine, it's called Shawn, and he makes their day.
So if you get a chance to come down to Glenwood Garage, you would get the Shawn experience, always have a smile on your face, you'll leave with a smile because Shawn took time for you. He's not just there pumping fuel or checking oil, he's there to ask the driver how their day's going, to have a conversation with them, to send them off with a smile.
For me, it's like you have a positive person in your life, you know, and people are very negative lately, so, and it's always good to see a happy face. And when I see Shawn, I always see a happy face.
They say you just, you make them happier, and you make their days better.
Yeah.
How do you think you do that?
Good. Trying to be kind, nice. I'm trying to treat someone nice. I like to be happy.
Shawn is a serviceman's helper, and he came into us in 1998 as a summer helper, actually. And he was paid for the summer help, and then after the summer, we wanted to hire him on, but the school system wanted him to have some sort of credentials to prove that he could do the job. So he worked for a whole year for free. But after that year, he was hired on here in 1999, so, you know, it worked out really well. It's been great to have him out there, and he's kind of like a little ambassador for the garage.
Shawn's an important asset, and he's also a success story for the school system. He came out of the CSEP program lacking some skills, needing skills. We were able to develop that program for him, get him in the system. And here we are 20 years later, and he's still working at it.
Well, I think he's kind of unifying out there. He's a person the drivers see, that the techs see, you know, the drivers are coming in off the road, and they get the opportunity to have him greet them out there at the island when they come in. He just kind of brings it all together.
He's there for me. He does this for me at home, too. He goes out, he started the bus every morning for me, and he starts the car every morning for me. He's a do person. If he knows somebody appreciates it, he will do it. He'll go out of his way to do it. That's his passion, is his job, and then movies, and his Pepsi. He's got to have his Pepsi.
When he first came here, he had a hard time even communicating with us. And he's developed his speech, and he's gone through a lot of adversity, and he's overcome a lot of things. And I think everybody should understand that even with somebody that doesn't have every single ability, there was something.
So if I could walk away with just a little bit of Shawn in me, smile more, greet people nicely, and let people have a pleasant day, then I'm a better person for meeting Shawn.
Well, members of the board, I'm happy to say that Shawn is here with us tonight along with his mother, Joy. If we could ask them to stand up, and let's give them a round of applause. Shawn, I want to say to you that it is very clear that you have made a powerful and a long-lasting impact on all of the men and women that you work alongside every day. We know that was mentioned in the video, but I also want to say that as a part of the Shawn experience that we heard about, also includes not just those warm greetings and genuine conversations, but Shawn also likes to bring in treats for drivers during Christmas to share the holiday joy, and he has been known to keep a few Kit Kats in his stand for those who are in need of a snack break. So Shawn really is the epitome of what it means to be kind. And so, Shawn, we want to say thank you, and thank you for making a difference every day in the lives of our employees at the bus garage. Thank you for all the hard work you bring. I can't wait to get out there and see you in action, Shawn. And you all can all check out his story on our blog, The Core, along with all of our compass keepers. Madam Chairwoman, that completes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Spence. Madam Clark, do we have any speakers on agenda items this evening?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of our March 12 meeting. The motion is made by Mrs. Manning, seconded by Mrs. Melnick. The voting board is open. The motion has passed, and the minutes of the March 12 meeting have been approved. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda for the meeting. Mrs. Riggs has made the motion, seconded by Mr. Edwards. The voting board is open. The agenda is adopted. The consent agenda this evening has three resolutions. The first resolution is for School Library Media Month and National Library Week. Mrs. Felton?
Good evening, everyone. Resolution, School Library Media Month and National Library Week. Whereas School Library Meeting Center functions as the information center of the schools and provide for integrated interdisciplinary and school-wide learning activities. And whereas Schools Library Medium Program provide the experience and training necessary to prepare students to become successful and independent user learner, learning skills. And whereas Schools Librarian Media Program promote information, literacy, and enjoyment of reading, viewing, and listening for young people of all ages in all levels of development. And whereas Schools Library Medium Program provide resources and learning activities that represent a diversity of experiences, opinions, and social and cultural perspectives, supporting the concept that intellectual freedom and access to information are prerequisites to effective and responsible citizenship in a democracy. And whereas the Virginia Beach City School Board recognizes a vital role that Schools Library Medium Centers play in the educational process. And whereas Virginia Beach Public Libraries and Virginia Beach School Libraries have formed a unique partnership that provides for the sharing of resources and services to the mutual benefit of all patrons. Now therefore be it resolved that the Virginia Beach City School Board reconfirms its belief in the value of the Schools Library Media Program and officially recognize the month of April 2019 as School Library Media Month, and the week of April 7 through 13, 2019 as National Library Week, calling their significance to the attention of all Virginia Beach citizens. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this board.
Thank you, Mrs. Felton. Next, we have a resolution for Mathematics Awareness Month. Mrs. Rye.
Whereas the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics recognizes April as Mathematics Awareness Month. And whereas mathematical literacy is essential for all, and the inclusion of such in mathematics education ensures a culture of equity where students are empowered by the many opportunities math affords. And whereas mathematics is an essential skill, both in life and in the workplace. And whereas mathematical reasoning, sense-making, problem-solving, and communication are essential skills. And whereas the language and processes of mathematics are basic to all other disciplines. And whereas our expanding technologically-based society demands increased awareness and competence in mathematics. And whereas school curricula in mathematics provide the foundation for meeting the above needs. Now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach designate April 2019 as Mathematics Awareness Month in the Virginia Beach City Public Schools. And be it further resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach encourage all citizens, and especially our children and young adults, to continue mathematics studies and to understand how its application will relate to the occupations of the 21st century. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this board.
Thank you, Mrs. Rye. Our final resolution is for the Virginia School Board Association Business Honor Roll. Mrs. Riggs?
Resolution 2019, Virginia School Boards Association Business Honor Roll, April 2019. Whereas public schools and local businesses are an integral part of this community, and whereas many local businesses play a crucial role in supporting our schools, and whereas the economic health of our community, state, and nation depends on a strong public school system. And whereas collaboration between local public schools and local businesses strengthens schools and the business community alike by providing a well-trained and highly educated workforce. And whereas an excellent public school system is vital to the quality of life in this community and fundamental to preserving a strong democratic society now and in the future. Now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach names the Adventure Park, Callum Mechanical, and the Virginia Beach Schools Federal Credit Union to the 2019 Virginia School Boards Association Business Honor Roll, showing appreciation for these firms' ongoing support of this community's public schools. Your work has aided this community in focusing on the goal of providing the best public schools we can for every child who attends them. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of the board.
Thank you, Mrs. Riggs. Also on the consent agenda, we have six policy recommendations that we heard in the information part of our agenda on March 12. The six policies are Policy 4-2 Employee Conduct, Policy 5-14 School Attendance Zones, Policy 5-48 Social Activities, Policy 5-50 Class Gifts Exchanging Gifts, Policy 5-51 Student Vehicles, and Policy 5-53 Activities: Access to School Facilities. Item C on the consent agenda is the schedule of school board meetings through June 30, 2020 addendum. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Mrs. Rye has made the motion, seconded by Mrs. Melnick. The voting board is open. Consent agenda has been approved. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the Personnel Report and Administrative Appointments. Motion is made by Mrs. Holtz, seconded by Mrs. Melnick. Is there discussion? Seeing none, the voting board is open. Personnel Report and Administrative Appointments has been approved. Dr. Spence, do you have anyone to introduce tonight?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. The Chair will entertain a motion for a calendar adjustment for the 2019-2020 School Calendar. The motion is made by Mrs. Riggs, seconded by Mrs. Weems. Is there discussion?
Could you, yeah, could you just explain what it is?
We'll just explain to the public, please.
Good evening, Chairwoman Anderson, Vice Chair Melnick, and members of the board. Tonight, for your consideration, is an alteration to the 2019-2020 School Calendar. In the calendar the board approved in November of 2017, the Division had a staff day scheduled for Monday, March 30. However, recently, the Office of the Registrar reached out to the School Division to consider its operational plans for Tuesday, March 3, the presidential primary election date. In 2016, the last presidential primary, there was increased participation at local polling sites. The same increase is expected by the Registrar's office for 2020. In reaching out to our sister cities, Norfolk, Portsmouth, and Suffolk will all not have students reporting March 3. After careful consideration of the impact on the more than 45 school facilities used as polling sites, its administration's recommendation to move the approved March 30 staff day to Tuesday, March 3. If approved, the Department of Meeting Communications will send new calendars to families and staff members, as well as reminders throughout the year. I could take any questions if there are any.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions or comments? Mr. Edwards.
Publicizing, I mean, we've had the calendar out, this is a change. Families may have actually been looking ahead and stuff, and our organizations to, you know, I'd suggest we, you know, aggressively get it out rather than just put it on a shelf.
Absolutely. Right. But I do think it's a wise choice to make that change, especially considering, I think, Dr. Spence, you said there were like 90,000 people who voted in the last presidential primary. So if we have that many people, and we probably will on March 3 of 2020, we need to make sure that students are not in our buildings at that time. Thank you. The voting board is open. And the motion to adjust the 2019-2020 school year calendar has passed. The information part of our agenda is next, and first, we have information about technology and career education, Carl Perkins School Year 20 grant.
Good evening, Chairwoman Anderson, Vice Chairwoman Melnick, and members of the board, and Dr. Spence. I am Sarah Lockett, Director of Technical and Career Education. As a requirement of Carl D. Perkins 5 Grants, we are here tonight to present for the board's information, the proposed local plan and budget of expenditures. Last July, the President signed the Strengthening Career and Technical Education for the 21st Century Act into law. This bill reauthorizes Carl D. Perkins Career and Technical Education Act of 2006 and is referred to as Perkins 5. The funding associated with Perkins 5 reflects the 100-year federal commitment to technical and career education programs. Funding allocated to localities is critical to ensuring that our programs are prepared to meet the ever-changing needs of learners and the employers in our city and across the nation. In compliance with the Strengthening Career and Technical Education for the 21st Century Act, Virginia Beach City Public Schools must approve and submit a 2019-2020 Perkins 5 Local Plan and Budget for Career and Technical Education annually, based on requirements authorized by the standards of quality and Perkins 5. The School Division must submit this application no later than April 30, 2019. Tonight's presentation supports continuing Perkins 5 funding for programs providing 33,864 seats and 1,686 technical and career course sections. This slide breaks down our local plan for spending estimated grant funds for 2019-20. The Virginia Department of Education has not yet released official allocations by locality for next year, and divisions are asked to prepare a budget based on level funding with the current year. As stipulated in the Perkins 5 legislation, up to 5% of funds may be used for costs to administer the grant. This portion of available funding is split between indirect cost and test proctors. The indirect cost rate is calculated with a formula that equates to approximately 2% of the entire grant. The funds go to the Virginia Beach City Public Schools Office of Business Services, and the remaining 3% from this category will be used to fund the proctors who deliver and administer industry credential exams each year. Perkins 5 also requires that localities use funds for equipment purchases and professional development. This is where Virginia Beach Schools allocates the bulk of our Perkins funding, just over $517,000. It's budgeted for equipment and instructional materials at our TCE centers and secondary schools. These items include technology, software, machinery, and instructional resources. The proposed local plan and budget includes $138,000 for professional development activities for teachers, administrators, and others involved in technical and career programming. Professional development efforts for the 2019-20 school year includes a focus on connecting middle and high school technical and career education faculty to professional conferences and courses recommended by industry partners and our General Advisory Council. Funding for a portion of industry certification exams given on our high schools comes from Perkins 5, and this funding remains level at an estimated $70,000. The plan continues to support STEM initiatives and efforts to recruit girls into STEM fields with about $12,000 dedicated to STEM programs. The last item included in the local plan and budget is support for our co-curricular student organizations, including DECA, FBLA, Skills USA, and TSA. Career and technical student organizations are an integral and active part of each career and technical program. This category is funded at a substantially higher level this school year because the definition of students eligible for funding as members of special populations will be expanded under Perkins 5. Students with active-duty military parents will be included beginning next school year. This change will allow Virginia Beach to support many more students pursuing leadership development through participation in career and technical student organizations. In addition to the local plan and budget, Perkins 5 requires localities to conduct a local needs assessment to evaluate program structure and implementation that impact negotiated rates of student performance. Those performance measures are academic achievement, measured using SOL and, of course, exams for reading and English 11 and mathematics at the highest level; technical skill attainment, measured using competency records and industry credentialing exams; secondary school completion, measured using course completion rates, graduation rates, and transition rates, and that includes higher ed, the military, or workforce; program completer response rate, measured using the completer follow-up survey 10 months after graduation; and non-traditional career preparation. Enrolled, enrollment is measured using the secondary enrollment demographic form, and completion is measured using course completion data. While the Office of While the Office of Technical and Career Education continues to work with graduates to improve postgraduate program completer survey response rates, Virginia Beach TCE students met or surpassed every performance measure required by the Virginia Department Educa- of Education while in high school. The plan presented for consideration this evening was crafted with input from members of our General Advisory Council for Technical and Career Education, and would be presented to that group for their approval prior to the Board's consent vote. Thank you for your consideration of the plan at this time. If you have questions, we stand ready to answer them.
Do we have any questions? Mr. Edwards.
Perkins 5, uh, level funding is, you know, overall?
Well, we actually, I- I'm anticipating a rise in funding, but until those figures are released, we're asked by the state to just use the amount that we had in the current year to project for next year to make kind of broad plans.
This might, this might be a fair question, then. I mean, there is a current, there is a current year education appropriation is, does, do, but the state, I understand, then the state allocates, and the state has not allocated?
That's, that's correct. Usually, it's later in April. Just with the way our spring break fell, you may have noticed that this presentation is just a couple weeks earlier than it usually is, and we usually get that allocation right about the time I come to the Board, often a day or so before I come to the Board. So, um, we're just a little bit ahead of them this year, and they'll ask us to adjust.
This year, we actually had an education appropriation much earlier than normal. Well, you actually had one, which was, was, which was nice, but I, it's too bad that the state didn't seize that opportunity to go ahead and, okay. And, but the, but the newest thing is the expansion of the, of the students that can participate in.
For us, yeah, that, that's meaningful to us.
Right.
For, as far as leadership development opportunities, which is students traveling to compete in state and national competitions and attend those leadership conferences, we have always been able to support students who face barriers as members of special populations as defined by the federal government. But they've expanded that in a few categories, and, and the largest one that impacts us is our military, active-duty military families.
Was there an increase in the overall appropriation for Perkins?
Yes.
From prior years?
Yes.
So there is some, at least some potential that we'll get more.
Correct, and, and there will be a split between higher ed and K-12, and we're just waiting for those numbers from the state.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mrs. Manning?
Not quite done.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
So I, I read in the document that we have partnership with the Hotel and Motel Association, is that correct?
Yes.
With a new hospitality program?
We are working on that, yes.
Okay, that's exciting.
Yes.
Do you have any more information about that, or?
Sure. We are exploring opportunities and hope to come back to you all in the fall with some dual enrollment opportunities in the area of hospitality. I actually met with a human resources group from the Hotel Association today, along with Mike Summers from TCC and Mike Taylor, our ATC Director. And we're, we're hoping to, to meet both the needs of the students and the Hotel Association, and we're looking for a revamp on that program, so we're really excited about that.
That's great. I've talked to them about that in the past, so I'm so glad that that's coming to fruition.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have information. I'm sorry, is there someone else? Okay.
I was just talking about how fast she got away.
Okay. Next, we have information about the 2019-2020 Special Education Annual Plan Part B Flow Through Application.
Hi, good evening, Chairwoman Anderson, Vice Chair Melnick, School Board Members, and Dr. Spence. I'm Ronnie Myers-Dobb, the Executive Director of Programs for Exceptional Children. Tonight, I will provide information pertaining to the Division's Special Education Annual Plan Part B Flow Through Application and Report, which is often referred to as the annual plan. Tonight's presentation is an annual requirement to inform you of how we intend to spend allocated federal funds based on the requirements outlined in the application. Okay, local educational agencies are required to submit this application each year pursuant to federal provisions of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, as well as state regulations governing special education programs for childrens with disabilities. Prior to submission to the Virginia Department of Education, each school division must review its annual plan with its local Special Education Advisory Committee, also known as CAC, and submit it to the local school board for approval. CAC Committee Member, Miss, Mrs. Sandy Herman, is here this evening and will provide the Board with the committee's response to the plan at the end. This annual review is critical because the dispersment of federal funds appropriated for the education of children with disabilities is contingent upon the approval of the plan in each of its components. A substantial part of this application includes verification of adherence to a list of assurances delineated by the Virginia Department of Education for all public school divisions. Assurances such as the examples listed on this slide are actions required to maintain compliance with federal and state regulations governing special education programs for childrens with disabilities. The terms "free appropriate public education" and "individualized education program" are often heard in the area of special education. These two concepts are broad, but yet they are very specific for each student qualifying for specially-designed instruction. As each student's IEP is developed, determination is made about the supports and services needed to ensure access to the general curriculum and, to the maximum extent appropriate, the student being educated with peers without disabilities in the least restrictive environment. As noted on the slide, the school division has policy and procedures designed also to prevent inappropriate identification in the area of special education. In addition to the statement of assurances, the annual plan requires divisions to submit information about select special education programs and expenditures. One required component is information about the Division's jail education program. State regulations mandate that special education services be provided to incarcerated students with disabilities in our local jail, the Virginia Beach Correctional Center. Such services are delivered by certified special education teachers, as delineated in the students' individualized education programs. Despite an often transient population of students in this environment, our teachers have made strides in supporting the education of students with disabilities in this setting, such as with the GED preparation. Maintenance of effort is the requirement that each school division must spend the same amount as spent in the year the division last met, the maintenance of effort, and also budget at least the same amount that is actually spent for education of children with disabilities in the subsequent year. Proportionate set-aside is the requirement for each local school division to set aside a specific federal dollar amount to be used for students with disabilities who are parentally placed in private schools with, within our jurisdiction. Each year, our division hosts the required collaborative consultation session with the participating Virginia Beach private schools to determine how best to use the federal set-aside funds. Since the inception of this requirement, the group has requested and agreed to the provision of speech-language therapy services due to the strong linkage between speech and language skills and overall literacy. The annual plan also requires a recap of the Division's use of its Title VI Federal Funds for the prior fiscal year, as well as our anticipated expenditures for the upcoming fiscal year. The Division uses the federal funds for the intended purposes of the grant, including expenditures for hiring personnel, purchasing materials and equipment, and providing professional development learning opportunities. As noted earlier, each school division must review its Special Education Annual Plan Part B Flow Through Application with its local Special Education Advisory Committee prior to submission of the plan to the school board, and subsequently VDOE. On March 1st, the plan was shared with the CAC's Policy Subcommittee, and at the March 11th CAC meeting, the Policy Subcommittee garnered CAC's support to move the plan forward. I now would like to invite Mrs. Sandy Herman to the podium to provide Board Members with the committee's response to the proposed plan.
Good evening, Dr. Spence, Chairperson Anderson, Vice Chairperson Melnick, and School Board Members. I am Sandy Herman, Chairperson of the Virginia Beach Special Education Advisory Committee Policy Review Subcommittee. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Special Education Advisory Committee to recommend that you approve the 2019 through 2020 Special Education Annual Plan Part B Flow Through Application that has been submitted to you this evening by the Office of Programs for Exceptional Children. As required in the regulations governing special education programs for children with disabilities in Virginia, the Special Education Advisory Committee Policy Review Subcommittee has participated in a comprehensive review of the local Special Education Annual Plan through collaboration with the Office of Programs for Exceptional Children. The CAC determined that the local Special Education Annual Plan has submitted complies with the requirements in the current federal and state regulations and appropriately identifies the responsibilities pertaining to students with disabilities in the Virginia Beach City Public Schools. Please feel free to contact myself or other CAC members concerning our role in the review or any further questions you might have. Thank you.
Do we have any questions or comments? Mrs. Manning?
Um, I did not get a copy of the plan. When are we going to get a copy of the plan?
It's in the packet?
It was not in my agenda packet. You said you didn't see it either, did you?
Did we? The Perkins one was, I thought, the last.
It was, it was with the agenda when I saw this. Was it in the whole, was it a separate document? Because I only saw the Perkins was the last document that I saw. Did anybody else see it?
I didn't see it either.
Okay.
She called earlier. She called me earlier.
Well, I, yeah.
I was already standing there, so I'll look for it. Sometimes we don't. It is online, the one that puts it on the internet, it's after the Perkins.
Well, we get our agenda packets through SharePoint. That's where we look for our documents, and I never received that.
So we can add that, and it'll be available tomorrow morning, is that okay?
Ms. Herman, perhaps we can contact you if we have questions also? But you, um, the, the team, your team fully agreed with the plan that was presented?
Yes.
And thank you for all that you do.
The thing that was important for, and I know some of our newer members to understand probably, was that the annual plan is only a portion of the budget. So, and I, I think Dr. Ronnie Myers-Dobb can kind of explain that a little bit further, but it's only a very small portion of the overarching kind of special education plan.
Okay.
That was one of the things when we presented to CAC, that we just showed a comparison of what this grant supports versus what the local budget supports position-wise, just so they had an idea of how much our local budget really supports positions in special education.
Thank you for all you've done.
Just, just as an add-on comment to that, that's a reminder that the federal government has for years promised 40% funding for special education services, and to date has not been able to fund more than 16% of those services, which is why you see that this is only a small part of our overall plan.
And we would support that they do fund it.
And then just one more question. The maintenance of effort that you mentioned, how we have to use the same amount of funding, at least, is, is that the total amount that we have, or is it per pupil? For example, if we lose half of our student population, are we still expected to use the same amount of money, or is it per pupil? Do you know?
Yeah. Okay. Right.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Good question. Okay, it's in there now? Yeah, but I, I didn't see it either, but.
I, I saw it.
I just didn't go down far enough, maybe.
Yeah, it's, it's just tucked in right tight against the CTE grant, and so that probably got lost in there.
They look very similar, too.
Yep.
Thank you. Do we have any standing committee reports this evening? Looking for standing committee reports. Mr. Edwards.
The, uh.
Did I miss, did I miss one? I'm sorry. Hold on, hold that thought, Mr. Edwards. We'll come back to you. Our final information item is interim financial statements.
Be quick. Good evening, Chairwoman Anderson, Vice Chairwoman Melnick, School Board Members, Dr. Spence. As of February 28th, the overall revenue trend remains acceptable at this point in the fiscal year, as illustrated in our first graph. It was shared with the Board last month that based on our most updated March 31st ADM projection and the Governor's proposed amendments, we were projecting a surplus in state revenue of approximately $2.5 million, and that was mainly due to the proposed increases in the supplemental lottery-per-pupil allocation and in that, in his budget. At the close of the General Assembly session, the amendments that were adopted by the General Assembly, we are revising that projected surplus from $2.5 million down to $2.2 million, and that lower surplus mainly is a result of the decrease in the state's projected payment in the at-risk program. And this surplus also reflects the impact of a lower-than-projected March 31 ADM. Federal revenues continue to show a favorable trend, and at the end of February, we've received $439,000, or 103.6% more than our original budget for the year. Sales tax continues to show an acceptable trend, as illustrated in the next graph. Year-to-date through February, we are approximately $1.2 million higher than last year at this time, and the March sales tax receipts are coming in at approximately $137,000 more than March of last year. And our final graph shows the encumbrances and expenditures trend, and that's also acceptable at this point. That concludes the presentation. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, for standing committee reports. Mr. Edwards, you can be first.
The, uh, ad hoc committee for the Achievable Dreams Academy met last week, and we will be prepared to provide a detailed, uh, report, um, at our next meeting on, on April 9th in, in the interim. There is, in case you, you heard out in town, we, they are recruiting in the expanded enrollment array that I mentioned that, that our meeting a couple weeks ago. So that's, that is ongoing, uh, in the next few weeks. Thank you.
Mrs. Riggs, oh, sorry, Mrs. Riggs?
I just wanted to remind everybody that the Sister Cities Breakfast, I did say something earlier, is on, let me get this right, April the 4th, at 7:30. Dr. Spence is going to be one of our leadership guests, and he'll have time to speak, and we've got, I think we've got our count for our, um, table that the School Board's going to sponsor, so we're looking forward to it. There'll be a lot of city leaders there, so. And I'll have a report afterwards. Oh, by the way, at the CBDA, um, lunch that we had with our Princess Anne students in the, they were shadowing the businesses in the Central Business District of Town Point, our town center. Our youth ambassador was speaking to our group, and that's Sama Kubah. She's one of the International Baccalaureate students, so she represents us very well, and she'll be at the breakfast.
Thank you. Do we have anyone? Mrs. Weems?
Um, yes, I attended the Green Run Collegiate Monthly Meeting, and we, as you know, they went through the lottery to get their, um, their students into the academy, and that, that one's quite different because it's totally admissions is done by the lottery system. And I had an event, but I understand Ms. Felton was there, and they were very happy to see you, and it was super, super exciting. They had so many people apply to that program this year that they filled their slots, and they have, for the first time, a very long waiting list, which is good and which is bad, because it shows the interest, but then it also shows how many students they're having to turn down. But very exciting. Sharon, do you have anything else to add about that night for the lottery?
Only, no, I don't. It was only that the participant for the meeting greet for the internship, it was so many partners that we have, and just to mention a few, the lawyers for Bullet and Sanders Bullet was there as well, and the Pet Co., so, so many internships there, and business there representing internships. So it was really wonderful, and I just enjoyed the whole moment.
Yeah, good. And also, Wake Up 2019 is a free community forum this Friday, and it's going to be an old donation school. We've got a, two choices of times, one to four or five to eight, and this is all about media, drugs, and your teenager. And we'll be presenting, I'll be presenting what the school system has done with our curriculum, and there'll be about 28 resource vendors, and we'll have great speakers, and we'll have a setup in their black box theater, we'll have a teenager's bedroom, and the parents will go through there, and we have- hidden all sorts of, um, things and drugs and bad stuff for our teenagers, and you'll be able to see, you know, what, what's going on, and then also, we'll have, um, some FBI folks to talk about what, um, certain emojis and texts mean on your teenager's phone, so it's going to be very informative for parents, and that's this Friday at Old Donation School, um, 1 o'clock till 4, and 5 till 8. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weems. Anyone else? Mrs. Manning?
Um, yes, I attended the Virginia Beach Mayor's Committee for People with Disabilities this last week, and we're talking about, um, different items that we're going to be discussing over the next few months, and we've talked about actually going off-site to visit some organizations in the community like Camp Grom, who provides services to people in our community with disabilities, and they also had a request for, um, to, to find out, have a speaker for, regarding special education services in, in our schools, so I may be calling on you, Ms. Myers-Dobbs, and maybe even on CAC to, um, present to the committee.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else? Okay. That concludes our formal meeting.